Thanks, everyone. Go to, all right, we've already approved the committee agenda. We approved that at 9:00 this morning. And so we will head to, and to item six. Am I on track, Jennifer? I'm looking at you for, okay. So we're at item six, which is our review of actuarial assumptions, which is just the highlight of the year for me. It kind of is now. I joke that when I first came on the board, I didn't really know what actuaries did. And now I'm keenly aware of the important role that actuaries play in how we're thinking about the funding of the system and how we think about our future financially. So I actually do really look forward to this conversation. So I'm really excited to have Milliman and Mark and Nick here from Milliman, and David and Rick, our actuarial staff here, and Jordan. So without further ado, we'll have you guys take it away.
Good morning. You are lucky because you have five actuaries in front of you today.
Exciting at this.
Yes. And before I hand it over to Rick and Mark, and I just wanted to remind everyone that this is sort of the last step in the year-long process that started a year ago, what we call our asset liability process. If you recall, last year, we spent an entire year to decide, one of the most important decisions on the asset side, how should we invest our assets? And I just want to remind everyone, last May, the board made an important decision that influenced a lot of what we're recommending today. Those were the capital market assumptions. So last May, the board was presented a package of assumption as to what can we expect to earn on the, for the various asset classes in which we invest? And also that day, one of the decisions made by the board is what long-term inflation assumption should we use as part of the ALM process? And at that time, a decision was made to use 2.75, which is influencing one of the recommendations in front of you today. In November, the board made a decision on how to invest the assets going forward. Some minor changes were made to the asset allocation. So today, the recommendation that you have with respect to the investment return assumption is based on the capital market assumptions that were adopted last May and the act, the asset allocation that was adopted by the board in November. So this is sort of what is, sort of behind the recommendation to keep our investment return assumption at seven. So it's based on those decisions that the board made last November. With this, I'll pass it over to Rick.
Thank you, David. Good morning, members of the board, Madam Chair. Today, we have Mark Allerman and Nick Caya from Milliman to present the results of the 2020 Actuarial Experience Study. And before I turn it over to Mark and Nick, I think it's important because they've completed a report that has a number of recommendations in them. They're all in black and white. And as they're all on paper, they look very similar in the, in the fact that when we track actuarial assumptions, some of them track and follow exactly as we have recommended. And others, we see trends in the actuarial assumptions that may lead us to want to recommend a different assumption. And so there is a continuum of assumptions that are very, very solidly tracking what we recommended. And there are other assumptions where we begin to see differences in what we recommended than what experience tells us. And so it's very important to understand that when we see that, we begin a process of trying to determine whether we are going to recommend a different assumption. So you'll see some alternatives here that have been looked at by our actuaries. And they're in the process of looking at those alternatives as maybe those are the assumptions that should be recommended at some point. But we're going to continue to follow those. And then at some point, we may be back asking you to adopt some of the alternatives. So just keep that in mind that some assumptions are real solid, some are not tracking exactly the way we have originally assumed. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark and Nick for the, for the, for the study. And there's one more comment. So the staff has reviewed the report that Mark and Nick have completed, and we worked with them while they've been doing the study. We also hired an outside consulting firm named Chiron, and they're in the process of completing a review of their report. In fact, they're trying to duplicate their results. And so in the agenda item, we did mention that Chiron had reviewed enough of the report to be comfortable with the overall assumptions that Milliman has recommended. However, they're going to complete their report, and they're going to produce a report. And then at that point in May, we'll come back with the results of what Chiron has recommended. So you'll see those also. So we've looked at it, the staff, Chiron is looking at it. We also have our auditor, Crowe, who has an actual firm, Gable Roden Smith, that also looks at the reports and all the documentation. So we've had a number of different actuaries look at and review the work that Milliman has done. So we bring you recommendations that have been thoroughly vetted. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mark and Nick.
And if I can just interject, I didn't mention this before, but I think what we'll do is we'll have you make your presentation, and we'll leave board questions until the end. So for board members, if you want to just kind of write questions down on your pad, we'll let you guys go through it, and then we'll take questions at the end. Okay?
Thank you. And it is a pleasure to be here this morning to discuss the 2020 experience analysis with you. The purpose of the analysis is to recommend assumptions for the board's adoption to be used in the June 30, 2019 actuarial valuation, which will determine the contribution rates starting July 1, 2020. Now, one caveat to that, and Nick will go into more detail, is that the recommended assumptions don't change the actual contributions at July 1, 2020 because the employer contributions are already defined in statute. And either way, the state contributions will be going up by the maximum 1/2% of pay. There will be further changes in the future, as I said, Nick will go into those details. So there are two groups of assumptions, the economic assumptions, which are financial, and the demographic assumptions, which have to do with member behavior. Now, the, why the assumptions are important is they are used to determine appropriate contributions, to budget contributions. Since it's a defined benefit system, promising 2% of pay per year of service and final compensation at ages 60 or 62, since that's all defined, the contributions have to be what adjust. Now, unfortunately, the assumptions don't change reality. We can't, if we were to increase or decrease the investment return assumption, we wouldn't earn more or less if we were to change the mortality assumption. Teachers won't live longer or shorter. If only that was true, we could assume that teachers are going to live a long, long time, and then we would increase the investment return assumption so that we could afford it. But that's not the way it works. So the assumptions have to be reasonable so that the contributions determined in the actuarial valuations are reasonable. Now, we're not recommending any changes to the economic assumptions this time. We think they're all reasonable as they are. But I want to spend a little bit of time to go through the different assumptions on this summary slide. The, we're recommending keeping the 7% investment return assumption. The investment return assumption is the most important assumption because all of the funds come from only two sources, contributions and investment earnings. So to the extent we have more investment earnings, we don't need as much contributions. To the extent that we have less investment earnings, we'll need more contributions. If future experience shows that we earn less than our investment return assumption, then contributions will have to go up in the future. On the other hand, if future experience shows that we earn more than the investment return assumption, then contributions would go down in the future, which might mean that more contributions were set aside now than were actually needed. So it's very important to look for a reasonable investment return assumption. The wage growth assumption of 3.5%, we're also not recommending any change to. This is important because it projects what the future benefits will be. The future benefits are based on replacing a percent of final compensation. So a larger wage growth will create larger benefits. It will create, increase the calculated obligations of the system. The payroll growth assumption is the same as the wage growth assumption of 3.5%, but it has a different purpose. It impacts contributions. We calculate contributions as a percent of payroll. So to the extent that payroll is higher, the percent of payroll to pay for the unfunded obligation in particular is lower. Now, on the demographic side of the ledger, we have the mortality assumption, which predicts how long the members are going to live. That's important because the longer retirees live, the more payments they get, the more money that needs to be set aside in contributions. The mortality assumption has a specific part of it, which predicts how much longer people will be living in the future. And it turns out that over the last period, people are living longer at very close to the rate that we predicted. So we're recommending no change to the mortality assumption. Or if you want to think of it in a more friendly way, you can think of it as the longevity assumption. How long are people going to live? We are making some adjustments to the retirement assumption. The retirement assumption is important because the earlier people retire, the more years of benefit payments they'll get, but also those benefit payments will be lower. In total, the, the recommend, the recommended changes that we're making to the retirement assumption have a very small impact. We're also recommending some changes to the termination rates. This is the probability of teachers quitting in any year. Now, the higher the probability of a member quitting, the lower their future benefits will be. So higher termination rates, lower our liabilities. Since we're reducing the, we're recommending a reduction in the termination assumptions, that actually increases the liability somewhat. We have a lot of other assumptions, which are detailed in our report. And if you choose to ask questions, we'll be happy to go into those. Among them are things like reductions in the disability rate. But these actually have a, a very small, these changes actually have an insignificant impact on the overall costs. So I'm not going into, going to go into them in detail at this point. So let's talk about the economic assumptions. First is the inflation assumption. And we think that the assumptions adopted as part of the ALM study are reasonable. So we are recommending keeping the current 2.75% inflation assumption, which was what was in the ALM study. You may also note in the chart on the upper right-hand corner that this is the median used for large public plans across the nation, although I would highlight that's not the way we choose our assumptions. It's also a little bit lower than what we've seen for California inflation the last couple of years, as you can see in the lower right-hand chart. Slightly higher than the long-range social security assumption of 2.6%. And we, we are recommending keeping the 2.75% inflation assumption. Now, there's often more than one reasonable assumption. So in those cases, since it's the board's ultimate responsibility to adopt or not adopt our recommendation, we talked to you about alternative assumptions. It turns out that most investment consultants are looking at an investment return assumption of 2.5% or less. So we think a reasonable alternative would be, instead of having a 2 and 3/4% inflation assumption, to have 2.5. We are not recommending that. We're recommending staying with the 2.5, 2 and 3/4% inflation assumption. But we do want to let you know what we think are other reasonable alternatives. One sec. General wage growth. As I said, this is important because it predicts how large the benefits are going to be in the future. It's made up of two parts, the inflation assumption of 2.75% and a real wage growth of 0.75%. Real wage growth is the extent to which wage inflation is higher than price inflation. Now, nationwide, over the last 30 years, wage inflation has been about 0.8% higher than price inflation. And that's very close to our 0.75% assumption. It's interesting to note that when we did an independent calculation of what wage, what real wage inflation has been for California teachers over the last 30 years, we got that it was zero, that general, that the wage inflation had been the same as price inflation. So although we think the 2 point, excuse me, although we think the 0.75% real wage increase is reasonable, we're recommending keeping it, we think that it would also be reasonable if the board wanted to lower that by 0.25%. Then comes the payroll growth assumption. Currently, we assume the payroll growth assumption is the same as the general wage growth assumption, and we are recommending keeping that assumption, that the general, that the payroll growth is the same as general wage growth. As I mentioned earlier, this is actually used in the contribution calculation because contributions are a percent of overall payroll. Now, this is very interesting because there's a number of, well, to the actuary, it's very interesting, because, and maybe, maybe to educators, very interesting because it's not just what the general wage growth is for individuals that impacts payroll growth, it's how many teachers are out there. And there's a number of different things here. In last January, 2019, the California Department of Finance projected a 0.4% decrease in the number of teachers over the next 10 years. If there's less teachers, that tends to mean, excuse me, less students in the next 10 years, excuse me. If there's less students, that tends to mean less teachers. And I was just told that they've actually come up with a, out with a projection just in the, the last few days, I think. David was telling us that even shows a larger decrease than that. So that could be a reason, for it to be reasonable to have a lower payroll growth assumption than wage growth assumption. In addition to that, if the number of charter schools grows, that could impact the number of teachers who are covered by CalSTRS. On the other hand, there's legislation out there saying that charter schools might have to participate, their teachers might have to participate in CalSTRS. And if part of the budget is used to decrease the class size, that would also potentially increase the number of teachers. So again, our recommendation is to keep the payroll growth assumption the same as wage growth assumption. But in this case, we think another reasonable alternative would be to have the payroll growth assumption 1/4% smaller than the wage growth assumption. So that gets us to the big one, the investment return assumption. And as, as David said, and I would like to emphasize, we are really looking closely at the asset liability process. We believe that the assumptions that you developed and adopted in the asset liability process are reasonable. Given that, we want to be consistent with those assumptions. So the 7% assumption is supported by CalSTRS' actual asset allocation and CalSTRS' capital market assumptions, which we believe are reasonable. Now, as I said earlier, there are often more than one reasonable assumption. So we have, we're trying to be consistent here, but we've also looked at other assumptions, such as Milliman's independent capital market assumptions. When we look at those, we get a 6.5% median assumption over the next 20 years. Now, I point out that that's with a lower inflation assumption. Our inflation assumption is about 1/2% lower. So if you look at the real investment return, the difference between the total investment return and inflation, it's still at about 4 and 1/4%. And then there's also a study of investment consultants out there. It's called the Horizon Study. And if we look at that 20-year assumption, it goes a little bit the other direction. We come up with about a 7.25% median for the CalSTRS' actual asset allocation. So again, we're recommending keeping the 7% investment return assumption, but in this case, we think that reasonable alternatives would be either 6 and 3/4 or 6 and 1/2. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Nick.
All right. Thank you, Mark. I'm going to talk about other economic assumptions, just as a little background, just as we have some newer board members, just to remind you, we have four other programs which use at least some of the DB program assumptions. They are the Defined Benefit Supplement and the Cash Balance Benefit Program. These are credit, these are cash balance types plans that provide benefits based on the members' account balance. There's also the supplemental benefit maintenance account, which pays additional retirement benefits for longtime retirees whose purchasing power has been significantly eroded by inflation. And lastly, there's the medical, the Medicare Premium Payment Program, which pays Medicare Part A premiums and Part B late enrollment penalties for a group of retirees who would otherwise not have been eligible. So those are the acronyms there. Just looking at the other economic assumptions, both the interest on member accounts and also the, the investment, the investment return assumptions for the other programs are basically directly tied to the assumptions that Mark talked about for the DB program. So we're not recommending any changes there. That takes us to this portfolio standard deviation. That's important because that's used in the board's policy on additional earnings credits. So under that policy, it's reevaluated, that is, the portfolio standard deviation with the experience study cycle. So we've done calculation based on the new CalSTRS' capital market assumptions, and we're recommending that be updated to the numbers shown, the 13.1% for DBS, which has a different asset allocation than the cash balance benefit plan. Lastly, the MPP program assumptions. We have particular, special assumptions for this program, and we reviewed the actual percentage of members who actually enrolled in that plan. And we're recommending a decrease in enrollment rates, which continues a trend we've seen for, for about the 20 years that program's been in existence. And also, we're recommending a slight increase in future Part A and Part B premiums, and those are based on forecasts by Milliman's, Milliman's healthcare actuaries.
Before you go. Yeah. Just wanted to say one thing on the, the standard deviation. I just want to point out that as a result of the asset allocation decision made in November, when the board elected to take a little bit less risk with the asset allocation, it lowered the standard deviation. So they used to be 15 and 13. They're now going down to 13 and 11. And just to translate in what that means for you as a board member, it's now going to be more likely that a, we will recommend an AEC when we evaluate both the cash balance and the defined benefit supplement every year. Because we've lowered those, and those are sort of triggers that play a role in whether or not we should provide an AEC or not. So by lowering those, it's going to be more likely, as per existing board policy, that we may recommend an AEC. Just want to point that out. A, huh? Yeah. AEC is an additional earnings credit. So it's basically when we analyze the, when we compare the liabilities and the assets for the cash balance and the defined benefit supplement program, if there is a surplus, the surplus has to, there is a formula as per board policy where the standard deviation plays a role. So if the surplus exceeds the standard deviation, then it could trigger an additional earnings credit. So by lowering this number, it is going to be easier or more likely that the board policy will result in an additional earnings credit, which means higher benefits for some of our members who have money in those programs.
At least in the short term.
Yes. So moving to the estimated financial impact, and when I talk about the estimated financial impact, I'm going to be talking about the
I had a point of clarification for David Lammerow. So additional earning credit, decisions have been made, so an additional earning credit for some of our members may be triggered.
So
So there are, there are some members who are in the SBMA program. Are those the members that would be?
No, we're talking about only members who have contributions on deposit. So they have to currently be actively working, and only those
Got it.
Yes. So it's only for active employees, correct.
In the, in the cash balance benefit or
The defined benefit supplement. Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
So as I said, moving on to the estimated financial impact, and I want to talk about this, I'm going to be doing that based on the recommended assumption that Mark talked about. Although there, in specific cases, I'll talk about the financial impact on potential alternatives, but unless, otherwise, I say, assume it's the recommended assumptions. So relative to most experience studies, the change, the changes we're recommending have a very small impact. Now, given the size of CalSTRS, a small impact is, is still a large number. So this kind of graphic kind of shows that. We're talking about the unfunded actuarial obligation. And just a reminder, the unfunded actuarial obligation is the difference between the actuarial obligation, which is the value of the benefits earned as of the valuation date compared to the assets of the valuation. So it's basically a shortfall that needs to be funded, and that's why we have the funded plan. Now, under the funding plan, there is an allocation between the state and the employers, and that's what the blue and the gray pieces of the pie here show. So in total, you see the unfunded actuarial obligation went from 107.2 to 107.5, an increase of $300 million. Looking at the state, that actually had a $600 million increase, which, to put that in perspective, is about 2/10 of 1% of the total actuarial obligation. On the employer's side, we actually had a decrease of about $300 million. And if you look really closely at that sliver, that white sliver down the middle, that's the unallocated piece, and we like to see that to be very small. That, that is a $300 million. It actually changed just fractionally, but obviously rounding it looks the same. So that was good. We didn't have a big change there. So how does that translate into contribution rates? Well, for the state, the rate increase would be, we're estimating 0.46% of payroll. In dollar terms, that's about $170 million a year. But as Mark kind of alluded to, there are constraints on the state's, the state contribution rate, so the increase only 1/2%. So based on that, we're not expecting it to have an impact, the change in the assumptions, until the 2023, 24 fiscal year. Looking at employers, the rate increase is only, only three basis points. That works out to about $10 million. And on the employer's side, their rates are fixed for this fiscal year and next fiscal year. So they would, it would only be effective with the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. And also, I should mention that the member contribution rates for the 2% at 62 members can change, but based on the recommended assumptions, there would be no impact on the member contribution rates.
So just one thing I'd like to mention here, just so that, so if you recall the, when we presented evaluation last May in our risk report in November, what we are currently projecting, when the board will have the authority for the first time ever to set the employer rate, is that we're going to decrease it. We still expect that it will be a decrease, but now, as a result of this, it will be a slightly lower decrease. Just, just want to make sure that we're still looking at a decrease over what's set in statute, but just a smaller decrease.
Thank you, David. I'm looking at the financial impact of the other programs. I talked about the four other programs that use a DB program assumption. A real short story here, the changes are very minimal. None, none of those will be materially impacted by the recommended assumptions. That being said, I'm going to talk about the alternative assumptions, which would have a financial impact on some of the programs. So as Mark, excuse me, so there's not one right answer when it comes to assumptions. Mark kind of alluded to that earlier. The other thing he talked about is for the economic assumptions, there is some justification to support changes, particularly reductions in some of the economic assumptions, although we do not feel there's compelling, sufficiently compelling evidence to make these changes at this point in time. Given that we feel these alternative assumptions would still be reasonable, we've provided them for the board's consideration, but as Mark said, we're not recommending that at this time. But I would note that this, at least the package of assumptions, particularly the lower investment return assumption, would provide a more conservative set of assumptions. And what I mean by conservative is, for example, the 6.75%, obviously, you would have a higher probability of achieving a 6.75% over the long term than a 7% return assumption. So as I said, you know, these are, these aren't, we're not recommending changes, but we wanted to put them out there for board consideration. And these definitely should be monitored closely going forward because of, you know, as we said, there are some with changes in the economic environment that, that we may recommend changes in the future. So looking at the financial impact, the alternative assumptions will have a greater impact, as I alluded to, than the recommended assumptions. You can see the state contribution rate would project to a 2.7% increase. That would be primarily due to the change in the investment return assumption. The employer contribution would have a much smaller impact of 0.4%. As we've discussed in the past, the state rate is generally going to be much more sensitive to change, particularly changes in the investment return, or in this case, the investment return assumption. And you can definitely see that here. And for, if you lowered, particularly with the package of assumptions, the 2% of member, 2% at 62 members contribution rate would increase of about 1/2% of salary, and that would be pretty much entirely due to lowering the investment return assumption. That's going to be the driver there. So in conclusion, we recommend the demographic assumptions, that we provide a reasonable projection of future member behavior. We believe the current DB programs are, the DB program economic assumptions, and also the assumptions that are used for the other programs are reasonable. So we're not recommending a change in the base recommend, the base recommendations. We're not recommending changing assumptions, that is. We've provided some other alternative assumptions if the board wants to discuss them. And so we have before you, as Rick said, in detailed in our report, in a number of pages, but highlighted a large number of changes in assumptions, most of them fairly small. We recommend these be adopted for use But we recommend these be adopted for use in the June 30, 2019 valuations for the various programs.
Thank you, Nick. I just wanted also, so you can visually see what you're being asked to approve. As Nick mentioned, it's a very long list. We have many assumptions, many tables. They are listed in your board binder, starting on TRB 88, all the way through TRB 113. So those are all of the actual assumptions that will be used for all of the various programs. They are listed in order. You have the defined benefit, defined benefit supplement, cash balance, and the Medicare premium payment program. And just the way it's done, when you look at it in your book, to help you see what is changing and what is not, the changes have been highlighted in the yellow. So for example, if you go on TRB 90, at the top of the page, it highlights the key economic assumptions. And you can see at the top of that page, the four main economic assumptions that we've been talking about, some of them are listed there. They're not highlighted in yellow because they're not being recommended to be changed. So when you see something highlighted in yellow in your book, that is one of the changes that is being recommended. But what you're being asked to approve are the assumptions listed between TRB 88 through TRB 113 in the attached value, the attached experiment study report.
Thank you, David. Thank you for making that clear, and I appreciate it. There's a lot of materials, so the highlighting and the focus on the page. I was just about to ask you that question, and you beat me to it. So thank you for that. Okay. So questions from the board? Go ahead and, is it, so, do I need to do something? I don't know. Can the AV folks, do I need to do something different till, are we good? Can you try and, no?
Can't buzz in.
So people can't, board members can't?
Can someone come up and support Ms. Hendricks? Our names aren't appearing on her.
Someone please come help me. Okay, great. Oh, I've got it. I've got Betty. I don't have anyone else, so try, okay. You're all popping up now, okay?
Thank you.
Let's go, Betty.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. And I guess I had a couple of questions, and I think the recommendation is fine. But it does raise questions about whether the current discount rate and the inflation rate should be lowered. And obviously, with the strong calendar year returns and just the completed ALM study, not likely to be making adjustments this year. But I'm thinking about looking forward. And just in terms of, I guess, the overall assumptions as a whole, do you think we have enough cushion to absorb impacts from a lower actual inflation than payroll growth estimates?
I wouldn't describe, I wouldn't describe the assumptions as having a cushion in them. I'd describe them more as being a reasonable estimate of future experience, not significantly optimistic or pessimistic.
Okay, okay. That's fair. And then, I guess, other than the discount rate, if incorrect, which assumption, I guess, would most impact future contribution rates? I mean, just kind of trying to keep an eye on that particular.
The investment return assumption would have the biggest impact on future contribution rates.
Yeah, as far as the other ones.
Oh, beside it, I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's sort of interesting, the, because of the way the funding plan is set up, if you change the payroll growth assumption, it actually can, it affects the state and the employers differently. And in particular, I think the, when we looked at the wage growth assumption, I think it impacted them inversely. So it's really hard to say. But I would say, it's, as Mark said, it's the payroll growth assumption, I mean, sorry, it's the investment return assumption than everything else. I'd say one thing, that retirement systems have seen big increases in their costs, has been the mortality assumption. But a few years back, we really strengthened your mortality assumption. And based on this review, you are almost spot on for what, you know, that's really something actuaries take a lot of pride in predicting how long people are living. So that's not really a concern. So I would kind of echo what Mark said.
Okay.
And just to add, if you go back to November, our annual risk report, if you go back, starting about three years ago, we started to focus on three main risks that we are monitoring every year. The investment risk, which is directly related to our 7% investment return assumption, longevity risk, how long members live, and the third one, which we spent a little bit of time last November, was the growth in membership risk, payroll, like wage, payroll growth-related risk. What if there were to be, for example, a recession, and we start to see a decline in the number of teachers? Although it may not necessarily increase the cost of pension, but because payroll goes down, we would need to collect a higher percentage of payroll to just collect the same amount of money to pay off unfunded liability. So that's, those are the three risks, which are kind of in line, that we monitor in our risk report, which are in line with what Nick just said, are the sort of the three main areas.
Yeah, okay, good, good. And then the, you know, the 30-year payroll growth rate is close to 0%. I was curious about what the 10-year growth rate is, kind of more near term.
I had that number, but I can't remember off the top of my head. I know we calculated it, but.
Okay, I'd be curious about what that is. Great, thanks, Sharon.
Do you want to, would you like to get that information?
Yeah.
Later, is that a?
And just to make one clarification, this is where things can get complicated, because we have a, remember what Mark and Nick talked about? We have a wage growth assumption, which is more, think about an individual teacher, how their salary will track compared to inflation. That's wage growth. So what Mark and Nick said is, over the last 30 years, teachers individually have not seen, have seen a wage growth exactly equal to inflation, 2.75, nothing more than inflation. I believe what you're asking for is payroll growth. How many, what's the total payroll, which is, it's more complicated because you have, wage growth plays a role, but the number of teachers also plays a role. And on this one, it's kind of interesting, because if you go back to, we are still a little bit below where we were, number of teacher-wise, before the Great Recession. But we are much higher today than where we were before the funding plan, which is one of the main reasons why now we are projecting the employer contribution rate to be lower than what was set in the funding plan, because the payroll has grown much faster than we thought. So the risk now going forward, what if we have a recession that sends things the other way around? We may be in, you may be in a position as a board where you have to raise the employer rate again, not because the unfunded liability has increased, but it might, it could be potentially just a result of less teachers in California.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I'm just writing down what you said. You do a great job explaining very complicated issues. I have two questions. One around, I want to delve a little bit into the discount rate. And it was a Governor Brown priority, obviously, to bring it down to 7% to be a little bit more realistic. And at the time, I understand there were conversations about even going lower, like you talked about in the presentation. I think that 7% certainly makes sense today, but I do wonder if at a future meeting, Madam Chair, we could look at the pros and cons and what it really would mean to reduce our discount rate, maybe, I don't know if that, what that looks like to you. But I think it's an important conversation to have really realistic discount rates, given what we know and given the risks and the assumptions you're already building into this study.
Yeah, and it's something that we can certainly look at. We're more than happy to. One thing we could do every year, because in reality, what you, when you start to talk about maybe adding a, some conservatism into the assumption, it's all about trying to reduce risk. So I think it would make sense, if there's direction from the board to have this discussion, we would be more than happy to include a discussion next November. I think it might be a good place to have it next November, when we present our risk report. We could have a discussion around, if there was a, because if you look at it in November, last November, when you talked about the asset allocation, the decision in front of you was, what level of risk do you want to take with the investments? Where are you comfortable? So you made that decision. Now, if we go down the path of adding more, to be more conservative with our assumptions, now it's a discussion around, do we want to take less risk with the actual assumptions by assuming something that is potentially lower than what we think we can earn? So adding a margin for adverse deviation is what the actuaries like to talk about. So we would be more than happy to include a discussion in our risk report and to bring that topic to the board next November, if that works.
Yep, thanks, Sharon.
No, I think that's helpful, and I appreciate the, looking at other options and being a little bit more conservative, given the uncertainty that, in the world, and also in growth. And in your, in looking at the payroll question, do you especially, so I understand the student driver, what other drivers do you look at to determine the number of teachers? You mentioned charter schools. Are those the two main drivers, or the other, what other factors do you consider in determining what your assumptions are around the number of teachers?
Yeah, I think you hit pretty much there. I mean, we do look at historical, that, you know, David talked about, you know, if you do point in time, like right after the Great Recession, obviously, there was a big drop, so you need to take that into account. But those are the primary things. One issue that we also talk about in our report is that it's not, it's not a big issue right now, which is that the pepper has a compensation limit. So to the extent, I mean, the old limit was a very high number, 200, and the old limit for compensation was a very high number, and basically, no teachers are ever going to hit that, or even superintendents maybe. But the new pepper compensation limit is a lot lower. It's still, your typical teacher is not going to have any, you know, is not going to hit it. But, you know, but the thing is, if it only increases by inflation, if wages do increase greater than inflation, then you could get closer, and there could be some impact. We've done some projections based on the assumption, and it's still a pretty small impact. But to the extent that teachers do hit that limit, then it would be a bit of an impact. But as I said, right now, we don't see much of it.
Great, I appreciate that. And then, and just my final question, Madam Chair, is, in addition to looking at sort of birth trends, and do you, what information I think are, and obviously, the demographics unit at the Department of Finance does some of this, just looking at the migration trends, you know, we're seeing a decline in population for the first time. You mentioned some of what we're seeing overall in the state. I'm just wondering what other information you use to see if there is any type of trend out of the state, for example, in addition to, to things like birth rates? Are those the two main ones?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't gotten that granular. We have talked with staff. I think Dave could maybe talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, and we also, internally, we try, so we know that Department of Finance has their own projections. LAO also have some of their, have their own internal projections. We often have discussions with them offline as to what they see. And we understand from recent projections that both LAO and Department of Finance have done, they both, that I think have recently have a little bit more, what I would call pessimistic projections, because of the net out migration in California, especially of working families with children. So all of that is taken into account. Even though we're not making a recommendation to lower payroll growth today, that's why we started to put more attention to it in our risk report last November. This is another assumption that maybe worries us a little bit. A recession could really impact that. But if we start to see a continued decline in the student population in California, we don't, it could potentially lead at some point to less teachers as well. So we will monitor it. So it's one of those where, on an annual basis, you can be sure, we're going to put a little bit more emphasis and report back to you on what we are seeing every year. And if we start to see a trend where maybe it's time to make a change, we will let you know. But we'll make sure we give everyone a heads up. If we keep seeing a trend that is lower than what we assume, you can be sure that we will be having those conversations here. But at this time, it's sort, we feel comfortable to keep it as is. But do not be surprised if there is a point in time where we, it may make more sense to assume something lower. But for now, we are okay with what, we are comfortable with what we are asking you to adopt.
I appreciate that. I think those are two big concerns, given, given the impact on our teachers, the general fund. And so those are the two areas that we'd like to, in addition to all the other remarkable work you're doing, but really monitor to make sure that we're getting the best information possible to really feed into it. And in some ways, maybe, maybe considering being a little more conservative, just have a realistic view of where we might be going. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure, and the one thing I guess I would add to that, I think the word for the day is reasonable, right? It seems like that kind of came through in your presentation in the write-up. And so I've been through this a few times now, and I think that's, one of the challenges is, how do, how do we ensure that we're getting this as right as possible, given the information we have? And then trying to figure out the trends moving forward. So to me, the write-up gave me a sense of, this is reasonable. I think it's fair to look at it this fall. It sounds like, you know, we can integrate that into the presentation in November. I think my only caution or thought is, is that the experience study, we have it lined up now, right? So that we have the asset allocation in November, and then we have the experience study now, and that the experience study is based on assumptions we make in the asset allocation, which gives me an extra added sense, as a fiduciary of the system, to say this is based, it's not just sort of, we think this is what's going to happen, but it's actually based on information from our, from our asset allocation process, that we spend quite a bit of time and extensive research. So, and we do that now, it's on, we're doing this every four years now, we have this rhythm of asset allocation experience study. Doesn't mean we can't look at it in November, and it sounds like we can do that. But I think that helps me to feel like, when you come with your recommendation, it is reasonable based on the decisions we made last fall. So I know staff has heard this, we can, we can look at risk for next November, but it certainly helps this board member feel confident about the recommendations you're giving. Mr. Keely?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you for the work, supportive of the recommendations as they've been outlined. And I'm mindful of all of the time, energy, and resources that have gone in for this item to come before us, and the importance of the decision we make today. I'm fascinated by the inflation projections, I think along the lines of Controller Yi's questions as well, is, you know, I can't forecast the future, but it seems like we're in a relatively low inflationary environment, low interest rate environment. And given the cost of just financing the debt, it's not unreasonable to think we might be in this lower interest rate, lower inflationary period for a foreseeable future. It'll be interesting to see how that plays out. Clearly, longevity is a fascinating topic, and will impact the fund dramatically. Wage growth, really interesting, interesting. And then, of course, the assumed investment returns. I recall at a time when I was on the board, we had an 8% assumed assumption. And I looked at the portfolio and the construction of our assets and what it looks like today. We've made some efforts to take some volatility and de-risk the portfolio with the risk mitigation strategies, which was a big decision for us. We've adjusted our assumed rate of return down to seven. We had some fascinating conversations yesterday about the future of the portfolio and what that might look like. So my question to you, can you speak a little bit about how you work with the investment team on the 7%? I would make the assumption that there's probably a lot of dialogue and conversations back and forth between your, your side of the organization and the investment branch. If you could speak a little bit about that and how you came to this decision together.
Yes, so as you saw us, and you saw me, I think, once or twice last year, sitting here at the table with Geraldine and other investment staff, and we presented the ALM process. We really tried to integrate the whole process together last year to make sure both the assets and liability sides were in sync. When it came to the capital market assumptions adopted by the board last May, we left it to the professional judgment of the investment professionals to advise the board on what was the best, what we could expect to earn from each of the asset allocations. We looked at it, we think they're reasonable, but they were really, it was a recommendation from investment staff. And then we have based our recommendation of the 7% based on those capital market assumptions and the specific asset allocation that the board adopted in last November. So it's a basically, so we were part of the process. We've looked at what the board adopted last May. We also believe surrogate, to use that same word, reasonable. But again, I think, just so it's clear, when the board adopted the capital market assumption, it was a recommendation that had a lot of input from investment professionals. And I will tell you, I'm not an investment professional, and I don't think I would feel comfortable to come here and tell you, I think that equities were returned 8.5% instead of nice, nine, or vice versa. I led it to the investment professionals to make that recommendation.
That's great. And I think it's also important to point out, I love when I see all the dots starting to connect, and it's just, and it goes, wow, there it is. There's the pink thing, and what we're trying to achieve, and where our focus really needs to be in terms of unfunded liabilities, the wins that we have in front of us, and a lot of stuff. So it's really helpful. But I do think it's important to point out that efforts are being made inside the organization, which is from direction of the committee. People are sensitive to, there are levers we have some control over, cost for. People are sensitive to, there are levers we have some control over, cost for, for example. The cost of managing the fund, how much, you know, for every hundred, $200 million that we recapture, it helps us achieve that 7%. Things that we have control over, we're trying to, to, to do, do everything we possibly can. And we hear a lot about it in the investment committee, but it spills over to this item, I think, very directly. And I, I think it's important to keep our eye on that ball as well. Thank you.
Great. And the one comment I would make on this, especially as you consider the 7%, as we march down to try to implement our pillars project to bring more investment in-house, if we realize some of the savings that we anticipate to save, this is something that will, could likely, because that, remember that, that 7% return that we're, that we're asking you to adopt is net of all expenses, administrative and investment expenses. To the extent we start saving more money on the investment expenses, then we will have higher returns. So that's another thing to keep in mind, that could push that number higher.
That's great. Thank you, David. Thanks, Harry, for raising that. Joy?
Thank you. So thank you very much for the, for the presentation. And David, like the comment that you made, that, you know, you're not an investment professional, so you leave those, those trends and decisions to them. You know, we are not actuarial professionals, so having this team in front of us and being able to deliver such technical and complicated information in a way that helps us understand, you know, what some of the choices are, as well as your recommendations, and the reasonableness of the recommendations is, is extremely helpful. So thank, thank you, you know, again. You know, I, I know that when we made the change, I think it was a year or, I guess, last year, maybe the year before that, around our mortality assumptions, I think whenever we, we hear about a recommendation to change our demographic assumptions, it's based on a lot of data over a long period of time. I think for either you or your peers in the industry to kind of come up with recommendations that adjustments may be appropriate to make. So one of the things that I thought was interesting in the recommendations was around the recommendation to change the way that we calc, I think that it's the way that, the method that we use to calculate retirement, where for pre-1990, we've just been using age, post-90, we've been doing age and service. And I think you're recommending, you're recommending using the same formula for, for both, which is, you know, what will have some impact. And I guess I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about why this recommendation now, given that historically, we've used two different methods for the two different buckets, I'm not sure whatever, what other term to use, for, for pre-90 and post-90?
Yeah, I'll kind of speak to that. It's sort of an evolved, but really what happened was, in your case, the, the service retirement for your entire plan back until 20 years ago, it was all just based on age. But then, you know, there were certain things like the longevity bonus came in, so when somebody got 30 years, there was an incentive. And then there was a career average bonus, there was an incentive to retire at 30 years. So we, you know, we reflected that in your, your base assumptions, but we kept the 1990 the same, and the theory being, hey, you know, just because we changed that, that wouldn't change 19, the behavior of the people under the old benefit structure. So, and this whole thing is, it's very complicated because we're doing a hypothetical evaluation. So, yeah, it's, it's a little tough. So we kind of had to make the decision. But what happened is it's sort of been evolving actuarial consistency, actuaries to reflect age and services, and not just because of the way the benefit factors work. So as we started, we changed, we further applied age and service to the entire, the current benefit. We felt that we were kind of diverting from the actual practice by keeping the, the 1990 structure under the age factors. And that was, you know, obviously, we thought hard about this, but that's why we made it. And as you see, it's not a huge difference, I think it was like 13 basis points increase in the state, the way it worked out, but it did, it did move things slightly, yes.
Okay, so it's really, there wasn't anything in particular specific to CalSTRS that caused you to do this? It was really just making a decision to kind of conform to best practices in the industry?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
And also, yeah, I just want to add, if you go back in time, I think a lot of this, if you want, you can tie it down to technology improvements. If you go back, because if you ask someone, do you think age matters in someone's decision to retire? Yes. Now, do you think service also matters in the decision of someone's to retire? If you have more service, it's more likely you're going to retire. I think years ago, even, I remember when I started at the, in the public sector across the river, when we ran an actual valuation, it took the computer 36 hours to do one valuation. One run, you click the button, 36 hours later, you had the result. Now, now we can do it, we still have over a million members, we can do it in less than 10 minutes. So over the years, actuaries have realized, oh, now computers can handle probabilities that are based on age and service. Before, the computer could only handle age. So over the time, changes got, started to be made in the actual community, and I think we feel, I think this is one area where that upgrade, if you want, was never made, and we feel it's the right, it's, it's time to do it now.
So let me add just one little piece of history. So the 1990 benefit structure was a part of some of the benefit changes around 2000, so 1998, 1999, 2000. So as a part of that, the 1990 benefit structure came about, and the agreement to, to measure that as part of the valuations. So before that, we really didn't have any data specific to pre and post 1990 benefits. And so the first time we really was able to, to really even to look at it was like the two, like in 2000 and, you know, you're looking at 2006 study, so, and looking at the 2004 study. So that was like the first year we even began to look at that. So because this is a pension plan, and we look at things long-term, you're going to need a number of years of data in order to be able to say something different is happening. So you just don't look at the last three years to say that. So now that we've had, you know, 15, 16 years, where we've looked at it through these experience studies, I think it just came to a point where they, they, you know that that has an effect, and now you're able even to really measure it well enough so that you're able to make a change. So it's one thing to say, we need to measure it by age and service, it's enough to have enough data after the, the benefit increases to be able to determine what those changes should be. So I think it's just been enough years, and we know that it's true, so time to make the change.
Yeah, and just to follow up, now we have the new 2% at 62 members, who, you know, almost nobody's eligible for retirement now, so we're, I mean, that, that's where we're looking at, you know, what the 2% at 60 members looking at with the formulas, and try to come up with our best estimate. But that's like another thing, is like Rick said, that's going to evolve over time as we have more information.
Thank you. Okay. Bill?
Well, I, I think as a relatively new member of this board, I'm very well-served by the quality of our consultants and our staff in addressing these issues, because obviously, these are significant issues on which we make the ultimate determination of what our expected return is. And I'm heartened to see the collaboration between the actuarial staff and the investment staff, because that, that really has been a tremendous innovation, I think, this past year, as I understand it. And it's really, I think, helped focus, focus me on, you know, the importance of the assumptions that are made. And with that in mind, I just want to ask a, a typical question that might be asked of you in other settings as well. Nick and Mark, is this a, is 7% long-term investment return prudent and reasonable for an investor?
Do you think it's prudent and reasonable for CalSTRS? Do you think it's a reasonable, it's like, by the way, by the way, the key word in the actuarial standards of practice for selecting assumptions is reasonable. But, but yes, we do think it's a prudent assumption for CalSTRS.
Yeah, and that's for CalSTRS. If an investor had 50% in bonds and to his age, no, 7% is not going to be reasonable. So it really, it's really a specific question, so.
Yeah. And I just want to commend the Chair and Vice Chair for, you know, sort of bringing out points that I had in mind and really bringing clarity to that. And I want to commend David for his recommendation that we look at this again in November. I think that's a good idea, and thank you for making it.
Great. So we've heard from all the questions from the board. We do have a member of the public that wants to speak on this item, and I did want to just read my speaking notes for our new process for public comment, that we typically, we have a 10-minute public comment period at the end of each agenda item. And that public comment after each agenda item is limited just to that agenda item only. There's additional opportunities for statements from the public for items not pertaining to specific items at the end of our open session time, so you can wait to that. Submitting, we have a speaker request form in the back, and you can submit that to the CEO or any of the CalSTRS staff in the room. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes, and we have a timer up on the screen for you. And also, I just wanted to mention that our, our board meetings are live web-streamed and video archived, and available to the public at our website, calstrs.com. And to protect the privacy of minors who wish to address the board, public commenters under the age of 18 may address the board, but CalSTRS will not live webstream or video archive their comments. Public commenters over the age of 18 may be recorded and included in the web stream of this meeting. So with that, I believe we have Britt. Are you in the room somewhere? So Britt Doughty from the California Federation of Teachers, you want to speak on the actual assumptions item. Hi, Britt.
Good morning. So first, I want to thank the CalSTRS staff and board for their excellent analysis and the depth to which they go, and looking at protecting our pension fund for the future. Thank you for what you do. It truly is excellent. There, there is one important assumption that, that, you know, as union leaders, we want to make the board and remind them of. And that is, when you make small changes to the risk assumptions, or small changes of like a quarter or half percent on employee or employer contribution rates, that has a ripple effect, that directly impacts us as employees, which in turn impacts our communities and our students. And what I'm getting at is that the pension is part of the total compensation that we receive: salary, health, welfare benefits, and pension contributions. So if there are small changes to the assumptions of, of this, of your return, or employer contribution rates, we see that at the bargaining table. We, our employees see it in terms of their total fiscal outlook of how many people they can employ, or how much money is available for compensation. And so this snowballs. So we see this, if there were small changes made at the large level, that could snowball into a smaller wage growth for employees, because there's less money available to go towards increasing salaries, which complicates the problem. Or it could go into fewer employees are, are able to come back to work the following year, which means there are fewer people paying into the pension fund. So it snowballs. That's another layer to consider, whenever you're having this conversation that, that maybe not everyone thinks about, because many of you may not sit at the bargaining table or work directly with our employers, looking at how many people we hire and what kind of wages we're able to get. And then when we have those things happen, we have fewer people servicing our students and, and taking care of their needs, whether it's physical health, mental health, or direct instruction. So thank you for the excellent analysis, but that's just one more layer that I wanted to remind the board of.
Appreciate that, Britt. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, this is an action item. It's been moved, moved?
I'll second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor, and I guess I want to make sure everyone understands the recommendations are on TRB 88 through 113. So those are the recommendations that we are approving. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? All right, you, you have your item approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great to see you. I hear it's very foggy and cold in Seattle right now, so you might want to stick around in some sunshine for a few more days before you head back. Thanks so much, Mark and Nick.
Just root for the 49ers, even though you're from Seattle.
It's a little too soon for our, it's a little too soon for Harry right now. Don't want to bring up any, it's a wound, but we'll listen through it. You guys have had plenty of successes, so, okay, great. And then, just, just a point of clarification for the board, we're going to, we have two action items this morning. We've just moved on our first one of the actual assumptions. We're going to do item seven, which is our rulemaking process for public comment with Brian and Grant. And, and then we will break for lunch after that action item. So this is an action item for us. Brian, do you want to start us off?
I will. It was a great segue when you read out your directions on public comment and the policy, and this reg in front of you captures that. And its purpose is to capture your policy, your current operating rules, and to start the rulemaking process. So you've, you saw this, basically, most of this content the last time we met, there were some very good suggestions, directions from the board that we made the changes on. So we, this is now the fourth time we've brought the concept to you. We feel like we almost have it right. I, I'm going to say that because I do have two changes, I'm, because like, it's never good enough. I think maybe Karen is influencing me. So I do have a couple of suggested changes, but really, the, the idea is for you to then give us direction to go start the regulatory process. We will then engage in the quotidian efforts of getting it moved along, and every time that there's a change or something, we'll come back and we'll intersect with you, get your direction. So sort of the day-to-day stuff is our responsibility, the big heavy lifting is yours. If, just with your permission, on the TRB 118, there's a subsection M. We had a lot of people working on this, and somehow or another, our draft got a little bit garbled. So that really should read, start with the word access, so the whole preliminary phrase would be gone. It was access to, to the meeting room is subject to applicable fire and safety codes, regulations, and policies.
So you're talking about, I'm sorry, I can't really, you're talking about letter M as the mother?
Letter M, yes. M as in mother on TRB 118.
And reread what it should say?
What it should say should, should start with the word access, and simply say, access to the meeting room is subject to applicable fire and safety codes, regulations, and policies.
Okay.
The thought behind the, the language that was in there is, is a good one. It's basically, we don't want to say you can't come in and comment on a specific subject because we're, we're raising the idea of a, of a safety rule or something like that. But that's really incorporated into the, into Bagley Keen and the regulation. So what we're really trying to say is, if you have 500 people who want to talk, your, your board room capacity is 180, so we have to work out some way for that to happen. So those are the two minor, oh, I'm sorry. And then in the reference, there's education code. At the very bottom of that page, it says, reference education code and, there is no education code reference. Those sections are both in the government code, so we would make that revision.
So those two edits would be made?
Those two edits would be made if you approve this. Grant?
Yeah, no, I don't have a lot to add other than that. I think this looks fairly similar to what you saw last time. The one thing I would point your attention to is J, K, or K, L, and M have to do a little bit broader than just public comment, and have to do with disruptive behavior and physical objects and room capacity for safety reasons. And then the other thing is, I am here if you have questions about the process. One thing that we're going to ask you to decide is whether you want to pre-schedule a hearing, whether you want to delegate, if a hearing is necessary, whether you want to delegate that to the CEO, to Jack, or handle it yourself.
Do you have a recommendation?
I don't, I don't really have a recommendation. It's a pleasure of the board.
Okay.
I think historically, you have done a lot of the hearings. We, but it's, it's up to the board.
Okay. All right. And I guess I'll chime in to, we've, I mean, anyone who's been around the last couple of years, you recognize just the nature of our boardroom and a lot of other boardrooms, it's, a lot is changing. And I think, you know, I've been here eight years and watched some of that change over time. And I think our reputation at CalSTRS, because I spend time with other trustees and other places, I think we've just had a very open policy. Some places have, you know, metal detectors and things, just, so I think the culture, and I think one of the challenges I have just as board chair is, I love our culture here. I like the openness of it. We're educators, we're very open and welcoming. And so I think, given just the reality of our world these days, that we have to start asking some of these questions and thinking about just how best can we continue a culture of being open. We love hearing both from our members and beneficiaries, but also from people from the outside who have opinions about what we do at CalSTRS. And so we welcome those comments. I think it's figuring out the right balance between that openness, and then also having, as many of the board members know, sometimes our meetings go very long, and even the conversations we just previously had, that's a very important conversation to have. And to have. So to find that balance between that openness and then also some boundaries and some focus so that we can get the work of the board done efficiently and effectively, and even just mental energy and lack of distraction, and just figuring out how to find that balance. And so to me, this item is just a part of that process of getting us to a place where we can continue to be who we are. But, you know, for lack of, you know, it just seems like some of the questions that we've been discussing and considering are just, it's almost like the new normal, I think, for just public agencies and being, you know, people in the public, that we have to have these conversations, just to provide better guidance for us and for the public, so that we all understand when we walk in here, what are the expectations for everybody in the room? And so I honestly think, you know, more, more information and more communication around this just helps everyone. It helps the board, helps our staff, helps our consultants, helps anyone from the outside coming into the board. So I appreciate the work that staff has done at the direction of the board on this particular issue. It is an action item. I see one person in the queue. It sounds like what you're asking for, Grant, is that you want direction to initiate the rulemaking process, and then the other piece is how we want the public hearing to happen? Is that, am I understanding that accurately?
Yeah, you could choose to pre-schedule one or not. You know, we may not need a hearing, although I imagine there will be significant interest in this item. And then the other question is, do you want to delegate the hearing to the CEO, or does the board want to handle the hearing themselves?
Great. So I would really love to hear from, if board members feel strongly about that second piece. It seems like we're being asked for direction on how we want that hearing to happen. So Phil?
Well, I haven't even thought through clearly the question that was asked, but I would just observe as, the first thing that I really dealt with as a, at my first meeting as a member of this board was this issue. And the amount of time and energy that this board spent and the consideration that it gave to this item was just overwhelming to me. I mean, it was very thoughtful, very considerate of the public. It was on the heels of a lot of comments being made at that hearing that day, one of the hearings that day. It was sensitive and thoughtful of everybody concerned, and I want to sort of commend the board members that were here for their thoughtfulness and the time spent on this. And then also the time spent by staff. So the public should know that this has been very well-considered and very thoughtfully created. And with respect to the question, I really don't have enough experience to answer what would be the most effective, and so I leave that to others. Thanks.
Thanks, Sharon. I agree with Bill. I think this has been well-deliberated, leading us up to this point of taking an action. With respect to the public hearing, I think it's been the practice of most boards to actually conduct that public hearing itself. I think delegation is rare. So I would say that we should probably fulfill the spirit of the rulemaking process and conduct that public hearing as a board.
Thanks, Betty. Seeing nobody else in the queue, can you just talk a little bit, Grant, about, per Betty's, that makes sense to me, given just the practice of other boards, and I know we've had hearings ourselves before. So can you talk a little bit about, A, time, and just logistics? What's the, how would that play itself out?
So Brian can jump in, but if we, I think the May, it would be appropriate if we were going to pre-schedule a meeting to do it for the May meeting. That would coincide with the timelines that were required in terms of gathering public comment or feedback beforehand. We used to, we've changed the way that we do the hearings in terms of timing, so we can call for comment in people in the room, and if there's no comment and nobody wishes to address the board, then it will end. We don't have to hold it open like we used to for a set period of time. But Brian, do you have anything else on the logistics?
Well, that's, that's basically the beginning. You schedule a meeting, you do or do not get participants. And then once you, if you do get participants, then you subdivide the time very similar to the text of your regulation, to allow folks to comment. They can also provide written comment, so they can show up and actually handwrite and comment, or they can do a combination of both. So we schedule a time certain for them to come. We, so far, we've, you know, we've done an hour. It's always been more times than effects. Sometimes it's just crickets. But I think that's a reasonable time, but it doesn't have to stay open for the entire hour. And that's, we would just then stop it, just like anything else in your agenda, and then move on to the next item. And you would schedule it, next item to begin at the conclusion of the hearing.
So it's agendaized.
Agendaize it that way.
Right, but we can proceed forward if there's no comments. And then the process between now and then, how do we ensure that the public is aware of this and has ample time to give input if?
That process actually begins before, before today. So we've, because we've presented it to the board twice, that's given us the opportunity to do some of the pre-work and reaching out to stakeholders, so that we'll continue and we'll make, we have a listserv on our website that people can sign up, and some people are already, you know, signed up to regularly get updates on the regulatory process. So we will put information out about it, and we'll continue to reach out to stakeholders.
And the other official part of it, what I referred to as the quotidian part, was really to file the papers with the Secretary of State. It will be published so everyone in the state is aware that there's a regulation out there for comment. So even outside of our interested parties or stakeholders, there'll be a general process. And we have to file a group of, some documents that talk about the potential economic effect, which we don't see any.
Right.
And so that process will continue. There has to be a minimum 45-day period, but we're gonna, we're not going to count on that. We're going to have a hearing, and then based upon the amount of comment we get or the nature of the comment, then each time we make a significant change, we'll bring that back to you, just like we did with the, the other regulations that we've done. I can't remember the last one. We did the reporting format regs.
I have a board member and then also a member of the public that wants to speak, and then we'll take action. So I'm gonna give the staff direction. Keith? You go first, and then we'll go to the public.
Yeah, I think as part of the process, the 45-day public comment period is to allow people to ideally provide written comment, because that's something that enables the staff, because, I mean, due to the requirements of the Administrative Procedure Act, that you have to respond to each and every comment, or, I mean, make, you can maybe do it as part of a group of comments if they're addressing the same thing. So it's not as if someone cannot make a meeting, that they don't have input into what, into the process. As far as the, the meeting, though, it is optional unless somebody, I mean, you could, we don't necessarily have to schedule one, but we certainly could on our own. If somebody requested it, we would need to schedule it. And it is, as I understand it, not necessarily a give-and-take, it's just a registering of the comments. So it's, you know, I would, I'd support the board doing, doing the hearing, but I think it would be incumbent upon all of us, given that we are allowing a hearing, that we should all, we'll probably have to read each and every written comment as well, and not just rely on the summary by staff, to give that respect to the people who do submit written ones and are unable to attend the public hearing.
Okay. So can we leave, Keith, I mean, I don't want to get into the operational part. Right now, we're just deciding about whether to have a hearing and to take action on moving forward. If that's okay with you, we'll work with our staff to ensure that we're following the correct process and, and I kind of bring out those comments just for the public to understand sort of what our process is, so just let people have their voice heard. Speaking of voices being heard, Mr. Folia, please.
Hey, Folia, CTA, and you retired. I just want to comment that, you know, you've gone, the board has gone through a lot of extra work to try to keep the, the idea of being transparent, opportunities, and so on. And yesterday could have been a very, very disruptive day. But I want to say that the work that you've done as a board has impacted the work that we do as representatives of our organizations. We come here, we listen, we, we do, are not, we're not strangers to confrontation and having people protest and so on. But our retirement system is very special to us as stakeholders. And when we come here, we want to hear and want to see business done in an orderly fashion. And I really want to commend the board, the staff, and also the security system that you have in place. I, I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he was ready and willing and did the job he needed to do so we could do the business that we needed to do. It would be interesting someday for us to just to evaluate how much it costs for our organizations to come here, to listen, and to become informed, and to interact. And so when there's disruption like the way it was a couple of meetings ago, it really takes away from what we're trying to do. So I want to thank the board for your leadership and taking time to really do it so we can get orderly dialogue from the public, but we can't do it at the expense of the business that we need to do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Folia, so much. Appreciate seeing your face at all these board meetings. Thank you for your thoughts. Grant, we will direct staff to go ahead and initiate the rulemaking process for public comment, and we'll vote on it. And also to direct you, hang on, to direct you that we will have a, conduct a public hearing. And it sounds like we're looking at May, doing that ourselves. And so is the board in agreement with that? Do we have consensus? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, so, yeah, make a motion, go ahead. Sorry.
I'll move. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're the good board. We just work so collaboratively. Thank you, Joy. All right, so it's been approved. You have your direction?
Yep.
Great. Thank you so much, Grant.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have one more very important item to conduct. It is an action item, a different kind of action. We're going to break for lunch in a few minutes, but before we do that, today is someone's, I'm going to keep it together, someone's last CalSTRS board meeting here. And this person is a VIP among VIPs. So Harry's gonna have to help me out, because this is a person that means a lot to me personally. I've taken a lot of Southwest flights with this person. I've been at the Burbank Airport, and I hear the, Sharon, Sharon, come over here! And Loretta wants me to come sit, sit with her in the bulkhead. Of course, who would not want to sit next to Loretta Tagenberger? And so we wanted to just spend a couple minutes to recognize Loretta's incredible leadership. I've been here eight years. I asked staff to put a few stats together, so listen to these numbers. Forty-four point nine four one years of service. I don't think I'm going to get there, Loretta, but you, that's, that's a lot of years of service. More than 30 years attending CalSTRS board meetings. More than 30 years. Eight kids, eight kids, eight children, seven grandkids, one great-granddaughter. And honestly, I feel like a daughter. I think you have a lot of sons and daughters out there, Loretta, beyond your, the kids that gave you, that you gave birth to. I also think, Loretta, what I think is so significant about you is that you embody just kind of what we do here. All the hard work we do here, you embody. You embody a long, secure retirement. You worked really hard, and then you did not work very hard. You got a pension, and you played hard, and you go on all these incredible river cruises that I get to hear about. So the dignity, the adventure, the purpose that we all have to look forward to when we retire, you model that. Teacher who worked hard in the classroom, and then when it was your time to retire, you enjoyed your CalSTRS pension with dignity, spent it well on hard-earned vacations. And I really hope to emulate that someday when it's my turn. So we just wanted to commemorate you, Loretta, today. And staff actually put together this plaque, and it says, Loretta Tagenberger, Los Angeles Unified School District, UTLA and CTA. And we have some screws here, and we're going to put it on the back of the chair, I believe. I don't know, I can't see how you're sitting right now, but we are, for several years now, we've had a special chair for Loretta. No one else can sit in that chair but Loretta. And so this plaque is going to be attached to that chair, and it is going to be the Loretta Tagenberger Chair from now on. And so we just want to say thank you. We just want to say thank you, Loretta. And we want to celebrate you with cake. So we have a large sheet cake over here, and you can, and we'll pass it out, but we wondered too, Loretta, if you had any, I don't know if we have a mic there. Perfect. Loretta, do you have a few words you want to say before we eat cake on your behalf?
Well, after coming up here all these years, I have enjoyed, I have learned, I have met staff. They have been wonderful, and the people and the different stakeholders, I love you all. You know what? This is what teaching's all about. Forty-five years being in the, in the classroom, coming up here to make sure our members are well taken care in retirement. Retirement is important with money.
Amen, sister.
Money is important any time, but it's nice to be able to travel, to do things, and to enjoy all my friends, and to still work doing the things I love to do at UTLA. The health benefits, I really, that's important to me. Everybody needs health benefits. Everybody needs to have a good retirement, a safe retirement, and that's what this is all about. And what a nice surprise, and what a nice, it's just nice. I feel very special, and my daughter's here with me, a teacher daughter from LAUSD. I need a caregiver when I travel, and it's always a child, and she's here. I love it. And each one of you are special. I can look at each one of you, how special you are, and how well I have known you. And that's it. Thank you very much.
And, Loretta, there's a few other people that want to, that want to say a few things. So Denise?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Couple more.
I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership development and all the fun times at the airport and other places. We would be remiss if we didn't thank you for all the leaders you've developed and all the teachers that you've known. And happy birthday on top of all of this.
Great. Harry?
Loretta, I hope they have that on video. I hope they have that on. Yeah, she's above 18. You're the best, Loretta. You're a beautiful human being, above everything. You're just a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful human being. And I'm so fortunate to have met you. And I'm grateful for the times that I've shared with you. You're a beautiful, beautiful person. And if it was to me, up to me, we'd have a sweet box of that back there for you, not a chair. We deserve a sweet box.
Thank you. Okay. I think there's members from the public that also want to share, so go ahead and come. share, so go ahead and come on up to the mic.
Thank you, Leonard Goldberg, CTA Retirement, about thirty-one, thirty-two years ago, that young lady dragged me in and I do mean dragged me in, because that's what we do, we, uh, we mentor people and she has really played it forward by bringing me on board in retirement and in UTLA, I can't say you thank you, I can't say thank you enough, Loretta, I've got a little something from the retirement folks at, uh, CTA and just thank you for encouraging me and so many others along and, yeah, I kind of feel like one of your adopted sons, so thank you for all your years, thank you.
Joe?
Uh, Joe Bartel, uh, Board of Directors, California Teachers Association, um, on behalf of the officers, board directors and the three hundred thousand plus members of the California Teachers Association, uh, we'd like to thank Loretta for her service, for the time that she has spent advocating, fighting, lobbying, arguing and just, you know, fighting for the students and the teachers and the, the, the members of the California Teachers Association, um, she will definitely be missed around here, her, her effects are felt far and wide and especially within this room, um, and I think I'd be remiss in saying that without leaders like her, um, and all the effort and stuff she's put into, to advocating for this, I, I don't know if we will have, I like to think she's played a, a, a small, maybe not so small part in creating the avenues for strong women and female leadership within CTA and even for some of us on this board up there, um, just paving the way and, and doing your small part in the universe to make sure that we, we empower folks to become leaders in our organizations and to speak their mind and not back down and be afraid of saying what might be uncomfortable but what really needs to be said, so thank you so much for your efforts, continue to enjoy your retirement and we will think of you fondly, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Ed?
And you retired, it's really a special opportunity to, just to say thank you to a person who has had such an impact on all of us and, uh, Mark, our president, myself and Loretta all enjoy the same birthday.
Wow.
We're all born on January sixteenth.
Happy belated.
So you can see, you know, that's a very special day. Martin Luther King almost made the sixteenth, so, but I just wanted to share with, with Loretta and with all of you, how much we appreciate the trailblazing, uh, work that she has done on our behalf, you know, she's a dual member in many organizations, she's a dual member in CFT, she's a dual member in CTA, she's a dual member in AFT, she's a dual member in, uh, NEA, she's a dual member with, uh, CTA NEA Retired, she's a dual member with Cal RTA, she, that personifies what she's all about and she's a person who cares about people, her profession and she does it in such a way that you don't notice it, but she gets the job done, she is what we call a role model, a role model of what it means to be an advocate and to care about the profession that you're in, she will go down in history as one of the trailblazers and all of us are very lucky to have had an opportunity to meet and talk and be with Loretta, thank you.
Mister, uh, I'll go to Pat.
Uh, Pat Guyer, California Retired Teachers, Loretta, I will miss so much because, uh, Loretta, I was the one that would get Loretta back to the hotel and we'd sit there in the reception room and talk about what had happened and she would inspire me in things that what we could do and what we couldn't do and it's just not going to be the same, so Loretta, uh, we'll miss you very much, I'll miss you very much and we hope you'll get back once in a while, thank you.
Thanks, Pat, Mr. Sternberger?
Hi, Mark Sternberger, CTA NEA Retired, um, Ed said a lot of what I was going to say, except I have to disagree about, um, something he said about she did it and nobody noticed, I think everybody notices Loretta.
Yeah, she's hard to miss.
She has kept us in line at CTA NEA Retired and, uh, has encouraged others to participate in, uh, all these things that affect our members, um, her experience and her dedication to her colleagues, her former colleagues is exemplary, um, unbelievably wonderful, um, and since we're the, exactly the same age, I, you know, uh, I mark the calendar to the day that, you know, I can be as great as she is, um, thank you, Loretta, on behalf of the, uh, CTA NEA Retired, our board members and all of our members, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Suzie Chow and on behalf of United Teachers LA Retired Loretta, we want to really thank you for all your service and for all your leadership, everything that can be said about Loretta has been said, so I'll just always keep it short and simple, I will go back and be able to still work with her, so she is my role model, she is the person who drew me into this topic of retirement, she says, Suzie, come on in here, sit down, we're gonna join this committee, I said, okay, Loretta, and so that's how it got started fifteen years ago, so again, I hope that, um, I can still keep coming up here when I'm ninety-three like she is, she is really, truly a role model, thank you again, Loretta, I don't want to start talking anymore because I'll start crying, so that's it.
Thanks Suzie. Jennifer?
Jennifer Baker, I just actually wanted to speak on behalf of myself because I've been working with Loretta for I think about twenty years, of all the people that I've ever worked with, you guys know I'm a little pushy at times, um, and of all the people who have ever scared the crap out of me, she is the one because she is really the, the godmother and she knows everything and everyone, but she's very subtle in, in how she, uh, in how she moves and, um, I was always so impressed with her that when I had a guy I was dating and I realized it was serious, of, of all the people, even before my parents, that I checked, made sure, had to check him out, it was Loretta and when Loretta gave me the okay, I, I knew it would be okay, but that's the kind of person she is, it's not just retirement, but really as a person, she works with you and I am so glad there's going to be a Loretta Chair and I can't wait to see what you're going to do locally in the district, Loretta, we love you.
Mm-hmm, thanks Jennifer, Brett?
I'm Brett Doughty with California Federation of Teachers and, Loretta, I just want to say on behalf of CFT, thank you for your decades of service to everyone in California, we are, we are a stronger, uh, better group of educators because of your work and your advocacy, um, personally, you know, I'm the new guy in the room when it comes to the union retirement folks and I've only been able to come up for a couple of years and I haven't had the chance to get to know you well, but I want, want you to understand that, that your leadership and your reputation precede you and will stay in this room for decades to come, uh, and I'm looking forward, uh, you know, thank you for being a leader and setting a path for us, for, for the next generation of union leaders and persons paying attention to the future of, of California, so thank you for everything, personally, I appreciate your hard work because I'm looking forward to being able to be ninety-three and retire and have a wonderful life, uh, as is my wife who's also a teacher, so, uh, we greatly appreciate everything you've done to help, uh, California.
Thanks Brett. Dana Dillon.
Who's that?
Who's that, who's that walking up to the mic?
Dana Dillon, Loretta, you know I love you and I've loved our adventures even more, which I'm not going to talk about, um, if not for you, I would never have started down the whole path of retirement and advocating for retirement benefits and for our members, for the times that we've shared, I am forever, I'm grateful, it was Loretta that talked me into going into leadership at CTA's Retirement Committee, uh, you know, the rest is, for those of you that know me, it's kind of history, I'm really grateful that now I get to be on the other side of that and enjoy the benefits that Loretta's worked so hard for and for all, you know, all that we've worked for together on her behalf and, Loretta, I look forward to coming down and just hanging out, because now I get to, love you baby.
Mm, thank you Dana, former Chair of the CalSTRS Board and CalSTRS Board Member for sixteen years, thank you Dana Dillon, with that, we will, um, conclude this morning session, uh, there's cake, I think staff will cut it up and there's plates for everyone in the audience, so enjoy some cake and, um, get some photos, I'm gonna run over there and get a photo with Loretta myself and then for, uh, the board, I think what we'll do is we'll come back, is twelve forty-five, is that reasonable to come back into open session, so we'll have forty-five minutes for lunch and we'll see you back at twelve forty-five, thanks everyone.